The time is 2:00 PM. And Bill, are you on the phone? Likely he will join us at some point.[11.10][11.10](bell rings) So, oh, that might be him. In attendance are Commissioners Mattari and Duncan. Bill, is that you?
Bill Brooks.
And Commissioner Brooks.
That's me.
Okay. Please join me in a moment of silence. All right. Thank you very much. And Dyson, would you do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Changes to the agenda. I know that Items 12 and 14 were polled. And is that it? The only changes?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have any changes.
All right. Public comment. Okay. Hearing none. I would take a motion for minutes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes, Items 1 through 4.
Second.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Mattari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
All right. Consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, Items 5 through 7.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Mattari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
And the payables.
I move that we approve payables for July 1 through July 5, 2024, in the amount of $3,550,115.39, and jury panel payments in the amount of $6,798.09.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Mattari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
All right. Item 9, Board Approval Request. And this is a request to record the 2020 tax deed properties through our Treasurer's Office. And Kelly Wees.
Hello. Good afternoon, Kelly Wees, for the record with the Treasurer's Office. And today I am presenting the unpaid property taxes for 2020. Our pending issue tax deed process started with 432 parcels last year. And since our initial letters that we sent out last July, we have sent out certified mailers on 80 parcels, published 63 in the Cordeleen Press, and have in your packet the 27 parcels that are listed. But since submitting this request for the meeting, we've had actually eight parcels paid, which leaves 19 parcels. Our affidavit of publication was recorded on June 3 of '24, and our affidavit of compliance was recorded June 11 of 2024. Our tentative date for the public auction is actually going to be set for the second Tuesday of September, which I believe is the 10th of this year. And with fulfilling the requirements of Idaho Code 63-1005 and 63-1006, we request your permission to issue and record the Cootney County Tax Deed for the remaining parcel of the 2020 taxes.
All right. Questions? Motion?
We can go ahead and make a motion just as it is? Or do you want to just say the balance? Because our documents have these additional...
They, yeah. Legally, they can't put them in the sales. We're good.
All right. So I move that we approve the request to record the 2020 tax deeds with the Treasurer's Office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Mattari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
All right. Item 10. Thank you, Kelly. Grant Use Agreement. It's number 23-NONE002. And this is an amended subrecipient agreement for North Cootney Water and Sewer District with Federal Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $419,984.63 in kind match North Cootney Water and Sewer District time. So $41,998.46 with our Office of Emergency Management. Ms. Littlefield, please.
This is Andrea Littlefield for the record. Cootney County Office of Emergency Management respectfully requests that the Board of County Commissioners approve the grant adjustment for the North Cootney Water and Sewer District with the change. All that's changing is their performance period from July 25, 2023, through September 4, 2024. And this has been extended. So now the date will be January, sorry, July 25, 2023 through January 4 of 2025.
All right. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the grant agreement, Use Number 23-NONE002, amended subrecipient agreement for North Cootney Water and Sewer District with the Federal Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $419,984.63 with an in-kind match from North Cootney Water and Sewer District in time of $41,998.46 with the Office of Emergency Management.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Mattari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Item 11. This is a lease addendum, AAL 2004-030, and it's a lot size increase with Panhandle Area Council. But I have a question. Ms. Stevenson, are you on the line? Kim? I'll ask Dave. So it talks about Empire Airlines, but is Panhandle Area Council, though, looks like is on the agreement? So I guess it doesn't matter what the location is. It's just Panhandle Area Council signing.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Answered my question. So we can go ahead and handle this unless you'd rather put it off to when we can have an airport representative.
Well, they submitted it. I think I understand what they're looking at doing here. So it's really just expanding the footprint on an existing lease. And I see no issues with that.
All right.
So I move that we approve lease addendum, for a lot increase in the Panhandle Area Council, Inc.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Mattari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
All right. We are skipping Item 12 and going to Item 13, Board Approval Request. This is Approval of Promotion Request, Appraiser 1 to Appraiser 2 in the Assessor's Office Specialized Appraisal Division. And Mr. Kovacs and Mr. Savage.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Dyson and Savage. Chief O.D., Assessor, for the record. I just wanted to clarify. We don't need to bring the request to do the promotion in front of you because we're able to handle that with change of status forms and re-titling of the positions, which we don't have to bring before you because the grade will remain the same across one of our open positions. So we move them into the open position and then switch the titles, and functionally, nothing changes. What we do need approval for is the retroactive pay back to 523 for this appraiser. The retroactive going back to 523 results in an increase of this year for $1,982. We can pay for that out of salary savings.
And then 2025 also going forward.
It wouldn't be an increase because this is going to be in the new position.
Okay.
Okay. So I think we narrowed it down to pay period 13, so I don't know that that exact date is going to, it'll fall wherever it falls in there.
Okay.
But isn't that what you remember?
It was the next pay period after that date that the person was certified.
All right. So maybe just put that in your motion.
I move that we approve the promotion request for Appraiser 1 to Appraiser 2 with the specialized appraisal decision and back pay going back to pay period, beginning on pay period 13.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Mattari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
All right. And no need for Item 14. So we are all the way to our executive sessions. So that was 10 minutes. That was good. Bill, I will call you back once we enter into executive session. So is there a motion?
I move that, are we doing both? Or are we doing just one?
No, we'll do both together.
All right. So I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-206-1B and 1D.
I second the motion.
Okay. Hold on, Tina. Hold on one second.
I just want to point out before you combine them, some of the people here for the Sheriff's Office issue probably shouldn't also be approved.
Correct. And we'll handle the sheriff's issue first. And then we can dismiss from there. What I want to do is find out from public comment. Will there be public comment today? No? Okay. Just want to make sure we handled that before we kicked everyone out. So, okay, Tina. Thank you. Okay. And let me just...
So we got a second?
Yes. We, Tina's... Yeah. Did we second? Okay. Bill Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Mattari.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.[359.81]